Thank you. I would like to call this meeting to order. And we have two members absent today. They were far enough away, but they're on holidays. So councillor Cook and councillor Crevitz will not be attending tonight. Councillor Crevitz, pardon me, I'm sorry, councillor Crevitz and councillor Fair will not be attending tonight. We, first I would ask, is there any, do we want the addendum first? Sorry, a motion for the addendums?
Yes, your worship, we have an addendum this evening. The motion reads, moved by councillor Rowe, seconded by deputy mayor Marks, that council approved the addenda to the agenda for Monday, September the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, being action item number one, retirement of chief administrative officer and clerk Donald N. Leach, and closed session item number three, solicitor client privilege still standing filming.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, all of those in favor, you have to call it. Yes, you call the vote, please.
Thank you. Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Crevitz is absent, councillor Fair is absent, deputy mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Now, is there any disclosure, pecuniary interest, or the general nature thereof? Deputy mayor Marks?
I'm declaring a conflict of interest with closed item session concerning earth.
Thank you. Seeing none other, adoption of minutes, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, move by councillor Rowe, seconded by deputy mayor Marks, that the minutes of the regular planning meeting of council dated Monday, August the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, be adopted.
Questions? Call the vote?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And now our correspondence for action, and this is a tough one for us, to have Don. I knew he was going to leave during this term of council. He had told me that right from the beginning that, and I think with, if COVID hadn't shown up and slowed everything down, he might have left earlier, but at least we've held on to him till the end, and he's hoping to get some of those major things we've been working on, such as Harbour Secondary Plan and the Heritage Conservation District and the Ward Boundary Review. He wants to get all those finished before he goes, so we need to keep moving on them. And so it is, you know, with real regret that we accept this. I understand why he's going. He's been in this for a long time. Thirty-two years. And I know what that's like, because I taught for thirty-two years, and yours has probably been even more pressure than teaching was. And we certainly wish you all the best, Don, and we will miss you very much, and we've been very thankful to have you during the COVID time. It's been really important, as far as I'm concerned, and I've appreciated getting to know you even better since I've been mayor, so I very much appreciate that. So would you read the motion? Oh, okay, a mover? Deputy mayor Marks, second or councillor Rowe, or councillor Wynn, whichever, they both put their hand up.
Try this, your worship. Okay.
Go ahead.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, move by deputy mayor Marks, seconded by councillor Wynn, where as council has received formal correspondence on the upcoming retirement of chief administrative officer and clerk Donald N. Leach, effective January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, and where as council extends congratulations to Mr. Leach for his successful professional career in public service that has spanned almost thirty-two years, and where as council expresses their sincere appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated years of service that Mr. Leach has provided to the benefit of both the village of Port Stanley and the municipality of Central Elgin. Now therefore be it resolved that said correspondence be deferred to the personnel committee in order to begin the recruitment process for his replacement.
Would you call the vote?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
With regrets, yes. Thank you. Correspondence for act, or sorry, for information, there are just two items there. Does anyone wish to, I assume, we would like to talk or hear more about number two, I'm assuming we were, I was thrilled, finally, I mean, we spoke with Ministry of Environment, and it was amazing, things changed very quickly, things that have dragged on for ten years suddenly finally got completed. So I'm just wondering, should Mr. Perrin or someone, or Don, do you want to speak on this, or? Mr. Perrin, would you like to speak on item number two, please? Exactly what it means.
Okay, thank you, your worship. So the correspondence the council has on their agenda is advising the municipality that the director has finally accepted the site-specific risk assessment for the harbour lands that have been divested. You'll see from that correspondence, there's been a number of submissions, actually seven submissions over almost ten years, and we finally satisfied the concerns of the Ministry of Environment with respect to the actual site-specific conditions of the property, as well as the the risk management measures that have been put in place. So there's, we're not out of the woods yet, we're not complete in the process, but the, the final step will be negotiating the certificates of property use for the properties. There's actually four separate parcels with the district engineer at Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks. And that will then dictate what risk management measures have to stay in place, any monitoring that has to continue over a period of time, and how the property can be utilized in the future. So that will be the next and final step, and once we're through that process and have drafts in front of us, staff will be bringing those back to council for for your review and approval, and then hopefully finalize that process, and that will assist in guiding council with respect to the future development of those, of those lands.
Mr. Perrin, how long would this next step normally, like it's, obviously it's not as bad as the previous one, hopefully we don't need a long more haul, but how long would you anticipate this would?
I would hope that it's not anywhere close to what we've gone through so far, but it would not be unreasonable to think it could take up to six months possibly to get through that process.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Rowe?
Yes, could someone just kind of give a little bit of an idea of what the certificate of property use means, I guess, because in my mind, I'm tying that to the land use planning, whether that is correct to do or not, I don't know. So is one, can one happen actually before the other?
Through you, your worship, we would suggest that until the certificates of property use are negotiated and finalized, that you, council would not move forward with finalizing the secondary plan.
You have to get after them if you want to get this done before January thirty-first.
If I may, your worship, Mr. Leach and I did have a conversation with the staff from Transport Canada and Public Works and Government Services. These are the individuals that have managed the project on behalf of Her Majesty the Queen for submission to Ministry of Environment, and we will be reaching out to MECP staff and see if there's any way that we can help facilitate moving the project, project forward, maybe a little bit more expeditiously. Ways that we can do that is we can actually draft the certificates of property use and kind of what we would like to see in them, and then that sometimes speeds up the process. So MECP staff would then review them, make sure that they're comfortable, maybe add to them, but we would then be able to maybe expedite the whole CPU process. That's not uncommon to do that. We do that in other provincial certificates, like an environmental certificate of approval. You know, we've done that in the past where it just assists the ministry staff to be able to expedite the process a little bit quicker.
Thank you. Councillor Rowe?
Sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, so in the end, there will be four separate CPUs because there are four parcels, is that correct?
We, we would have the ability to have four separate or one certificate of property use. Staff would recommend that we have four because they're four individual properties. And if there was a desire in the future for the municipality to, for example, make a, or utilize one of the properties as a more sensitive use than what's already contemplated, like say the, the West Pier, then it would only open up that one certificate of property use and require new, or an addendum to the risk risk assessment and record of site condition. There's more benefit to having them separated.
Thank you, councillor Rowe.
Last question. So are the parameters around the CPUs similar to what is used in the land use planning, meaning, now I can't think of the names actually, but there was open space one, open space two, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, they're, they're totally separate. So the certificate of property use doesn't speak to land use planning applications, it speaks to the environmental condition of the property, any sampling that has to be done with respect to onsite contamination to ensure that you know, contamination isn't moving, and as well as what physical barriers are in place and have to remain in place in order to ensure that there is not an environmental or a health risk to anyone using that property.
Go ahead, councillor Rowe.
Sorry, I said last question, but I think this might be my last one. So is it fair to say then that the CPU is really sort of the categories under the CPU are really park designation or space available for residential use or space resident, used for commercial use, or something to that effect?
No, when the risk assessment and the, and the record of site condition was developed, it was based on site-specific standards for a parkland use, which is considered a sensitive use. So if there's, that will allow for, if I'm accurate, it will still allow for like a commercial use, and it would allow for residential, subject to certain barriers or environmental risk management measures being in place. So for example, if it was a a residential use, then that is more sensitive than a commercial use because an individual has the ability to stay in that, that dwelling or that residence for extended periods of time. So their exposure limit is less, that they would be permitted to to be in contact with, with that natural environment or that that internal environment to the building. So the residential is higher, not saying you can't have residential. However, there may be barriers that had to be put in place or engineering measures within that building to be able to deal with that exposure. So a passive ventilation system or the the ground floor being up above the actual surface of the ground to allow for that ventilation. And that will all be in the certificate of property use.
And you understand that calling? So we'd ask them to bring it up to Parkland standard.
Yeah, I guess that's always been a little bit of the question, I guess, that I hear because nobody sort of, it was never clear, I guess, if it was Parkland status, what does that mean for sort of?
Parkland standard, which is, you know, other than residential, I think it's, it's the highest level, is it not, Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Yeah. Residential is, is on the same playing field as, as Parkland, however, in order to get residential, there are additional barriers that in place, that have to be in place for a residential dwelling.
Whereas Parkland, the capping and the removal of the, those two areas, all that has you know, brought it all up to Parkland standard.
Correct. If, if it was, if it was just a park and there was never any residential use on the property, what you have there is absolutely fine. It provide, you know, the, the East Headlands been capped with half a meter of table one or clean fill, and the CPU for that property will identify that that's been put in place, and that has to maintain or be maintained and cannot be removed. So that's one condition of a CPU. The, the CPU may also state that if it's used for residential use, that there needs to be an engineered barrier between the surface of the ground and the interior of the building. That engineered barrier could be a vapor barrier underneath the slab, or a passive ventilation system. So for example, on the visitor center that was constructed by the municipality back in two thousand and eighteen, that type of system is actually in place. There's a vapor barrier, barrier that's underneath the floor slab with tiles that are underneath the floor slab to pick up any vapor, and then it's ventilated out through the, beyond the roof line. So that's those types of barriers or engineering controls that can be put in place.
Thank you. Any further questions on this? I'm just thrilled we finally got to this step, through ten years. So hopefully the next one will genuinely, maybe Don, we can work it so it's done before you, that's important. Okay, we have a motion on the correspondence?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. The motion reads, moved by deputy mayor Marks, seconded by councillor Rowe, that correspondence items number one and number two inclusive, be received as information and filed.
Call the vote?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Fair, sorry, councillor, sorry, deputy mayor Marks?
Oh, yes.
Sir, absent. Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we're at now Central Elgin Planning Office report, CEP thirty-six twenty, this is Prospect Street, two twenty Prospect Street. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. McClure, who's on? Mr. McClure, do you have anything more you want to say?
Nothing further in the report, thank you.
Thank you. No questions? Would you read the motion, please?
Madam, madam mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt. Just to clarify, are we, are we now at a six-meter front yard setback? This has gone back and forth with the applicant. The application currently as, is, that's in the council agenda has a five-and-a-half-meter setback request. Staff would not support that. And we've conveyed that on a number of occasions to the applicant, reason being is that the, the five-and-a-half-meter setback is not enough distance to be able to to park a vehicle in the driveway in front of the garage and, and be able to be entirely on the subject property. There is a plan that shows a six-meter setback. I just, I just want to make sure that we're talking about a six-meter setback and not a five-and-a-half.
Go ahead, Mr. McClure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Perrin, yes, they have provided a revised plan that reflects a six-meter front yard setback to accommodate the parking in front of the, the house.
Okay, thank, thank you.
That's important. Okay, any other questions? Not read the motion, Diane?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, move by councillor Rowe, seconded by deputy mayor Marks, that report CEP thirty-six twenty be received as information, and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the zoning bylaw in support of the proposed residential use on lands located at two eighteen Prospect Street, which may be legally described as lots twenty-four and twenty-five, Plan one seven seven, geographic village of Port Stanley, now municipality of Central Elgin, and further that a date for a public meeting will be scheduled in accordance with Ontario Regulation five four five oh six, as amended.
Would you call the vote?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. CEP thirty-seven twenty, and this is for Collins Lane Farm Limited and Adam Pfeffer. Anything further to add, Mr. McClure?
No, nothing further.
Any questions on the report? Go ahead, councillor Rowe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's, I was just, I don't know, every consent is a little bit different, I guess. We see an awful lot of those, and I do understand that the county is the one that makes the decision, so these agenda items really are just more for our information because we don't really have a say in it, except that we do have a representative on the Land Division Committee, correct?
Yes, and we are responsible for the public meeting. We have to host the public meeting.
So I guess just?
Like a chance to, yes.
Just for clarification, Madam Mayor, the Land Division Committee does the meeting. This council, with the report, there's the recommendations contained in the report, and that's what goes forward to Land Division, and they present that at the time of the public meeting.
Yes.
We're an agency that gets to provide comment, just like Kettle Creek or someone else as well. So this motion will go forward to Land Division for their consideration.
Right, yes. Sorry, they are under no obligation to, to take any of the recommendations, but I guess I would just add in this case that they include a condition for demolition of the existing buildings. I understand that planning staff thought that it was because it happens regularly, that it's, doesn't necessarily need to be included, but I don't know, it just seems kind of obvious that it, it should be, but I would be open to your thought.
Any thoughts? Mr. McClure, you have a thought on what councillor Rowe is inquiring about?
Yes, the application had indicated that they would be removing some structures on the retained lands after. The report did not, I guess, recommend that those were included. However, if council would I guess, like to see that as a condition, they can definitely pass that along. I know in the past for other applications where they have suggested that certain structures be removed, the Land Division, Elgin County Land Division Committee has incorporated those requests into their decisions. So if, if that's something that council wishes to have added, that's something that was submitted as part of the, the application. So it would be consistent with, with what the application stated.
What's council's wish? Do we wish it included, or?
I'm hurt to have it in.
We amend the motion to include that? That councillor Rowe, I assume councillor Wynn, you said yes. Deputy mayor Marks, do you think it should be included?
Well, I don't want to complicate things, but if, it's probably not a big deal.
No, I not, yes. Mr. Leach?
Madam Mayor, just a note in terms of process too, Land Division does typically include our conditions, and if we saw that Land Division had ignored conditions that the municipality had asked for, we would typically bring that forward to council, but that you know, it's rare that that would happen. And then once the decision is made, typically the conditions will be spelled out in the decision and attributed to, you know, the municipality or Kettle Creek Conservation Authority or whoever to clear those conditions. So before the severance can actually be finalized, the applicants have to come back to Central Elgin staff and show that they've cleared the conditions, whether it's a development agreement, payment cash in lieu, or whatever the various conditions are to sign off on, and they have a year from the decision to sign off on those conditions, or the severance laps and the whole process has to be done over again.
Councillor Rowe?
Just, so just to comment on that, a the process works great, as, you know, as long as everybody kind of does what they say they're going to do, but I would just feel by putting whatever conditions are relevant to any consent within the document, then there is actually a tracking mechanism as opposed to someone saying, oh yeah, I've got to go check that piece of property down the road. There's sort of no paper trail, I suppose, for it. By having the condition in the, in the consent application, it just seems to be right there, I guess, and it's going to be on the books so that people would have the permit and say the permit is still open and hasn't been closed yet, that would be my feeling.
Okay, so we've agreed, and you got that in there then? Would you like to read the motion then?
That's council's wish, I've added that.
Yeah, I was going to say, two of them said Tom wasn't worried, one way or another, so.
I'll read and see. Okay, so, moved by councillor Rowe, seconded by deputy mayor Marks, that report CEP thirty-seven twenty be received as information, and that council has no objections to consent application E two thousand and twenty, Collins Lane Farm Limited and Adam Pfeffer, five nine three nine John Wise Line, subject to the following recommended conditions, approval of a zoning bylaw amendment to prohibit any new residential dwellings on the retained lot, a copy of the reference plan be provided to the municipality of Central Elgin, a drainage reassessment be done if necessary at the owner's expense, and demolition of the existing shed, chicken coop, and timber frame barn on the retained lot.
Any questions? If not, would you call the vote?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're now on CP 3820, which is amending the township of Yarmouth bylaw at 42025 McBain Line. Further comments, Mr. McClure, on this one, or is the report complete?
The report's complete. Just one point that I wanted to note as well is that, as mentioned in the report, the existing zoning crosses two property lines. So as part of this amendment, we're going to be looking to do just a technical mapping change, just to ensure that the property to the west, the zone reflects the existing boundaries of of the property. Right now, it's it's covered by two different zones, and and this application would kind of create a remnant zone on that adjacent parcel, so.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, would you read the motion?
Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Row, that report CP 3820 be received as information, and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the zoning bylaw to permit an approximately 13.42 meter by 10.35 meter accessory building to accommodate two personal recreation vehicles on lands which may be legally described as Yarmouth Range Edgeware Road, part of Lot 1, Registered Plant 11R9127, Part VI, Geographic Township of Yarmouth, now Municipality of Central Ogan, and further, that a date for a public meeting be scheduled in accordance with Ontario Regulation 54506 as amended.
Thank you. Would you call the vote?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
Council Row?
No.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, under the Chief Administrative Officer, the first report is the Highway 3 Transportation Needs Assessment. And I thought this had been dealt with. It was dealt with at County Council. They decided to cancel the study and not do it. And and I assumed that was all that was needed, but I guess the Ministry of Transport wants each municipality to also agree to that. So we had discussed this before. We felt that we should complete the study, that the county should complete it. COVID sort of, it was held up already a year at the time we said it should go on, we should complete it, before we canceled this project. But the county had a meeting probably, what, at least six months ago, I think, Deputy Mayor Marks. It's about, it was before COVID hit, I believe.
I remember this meeting quite well. I'll tell you why. You know, it made sense for us, the indications were that the study would be done in three or four months. And why not? But the next day or shortly after at County Council, I was caressed by three other area mayors who were quite upset that Central Ogan railroaded this. And because they, Mr. York was Transportation Minister at the time, I guess this has kind of slipped, we're a year and a half. So it's a lot longer than three or four months. So I would urge this council to let's, let's let Mr. York know that, yeah, the heck with it, get rid of it. And then we're on side with the rest of the county.
Well, and the county were the ones that were, the county was the one doing the study, and they have abandoned doing the study, so.
I I'd be happy, I don't know if anybody's moved or not, but I'd certainly be happy to, let's do this and make it happen.
Other questions or comments? Not, would you read the motion, Diane, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that council direct staff to advise the Ministry of Transportation that Central Ogan requests MTO to discontinue the study process for the Highway 3 Transportation Needs Assessment, and further, that council requests the Ministry of Transportation to remove any restrictions on the lands for the proposed Highway 3 bypass corridor as per report CO 720.
Thank you. Would you call the vote?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
Council Row? And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And now to CAO 1820, Working From Home Program, the new HR policy. Don, do you wish to speak to this, or, I mean, it's, wanna, go ahead.
This particular policy has been reviewed by the Personnel Committee. It was developed in consultation with the municipality's employment solicitor, Beth Trainor-Friskins. It's intended to cover the period of COVID, but also to go beyond, you know, COVID and cover situations where there may be some benefit to employees applying to work from home. Some of the things we've learned from COVID is, for a number of positions, it is possible to work from home. It allows that to happen where the director deems and the employee deems that there may be some benefit to doing that from time to time.
Okay. Any questions, then? We all heard it at the personnel meeting, so I think we're all familiar with it. I just asked Don to speak, so those listening in on Facebook are aware. Yes, Council Row?
Just to comment, I did look at the Section 4.6, I think it was, that was recommended to be altered, just to ensure that there was the outsides, any outside software was discouraged from being downloaded, and it was included in there. So the amendment was as expected, so, thank you.
Very good. Would you call the vote, then? I'm sorry, read the motion first.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that the council of the Municipality of Central Ogan adopt the new human resources policy 5.1.8, Working From Home Program, as recommended by the Personnel Committee, as per report CAO 1820.
Thank you. Call the vote, then?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Amazed, nothing for Director of Infrastructure Community Services. We usually have several on there. So so the Director of Financial Services, the first one is sole source awarding for the playground equipment at Turvy Park. Any questions? Concerns? If not, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Row, that the council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Ogan accept the proposal of the Power LT Canada Inc. for the sole source award for the supply and installation of playground equipment in Turvy Park in the amount of $59,544.45 plus applicable taxes as per report DFS 2420.
Would you call the vote?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. The next one with the fires, the financing for our net zero fire station, I'm going to ask Mrs. Nordeman if you would just explain exactly how this is being done, so if anyone has any questions.
Certainly. We're looking with this particular financing to use the borrowing, long-term lending offered by Infra, in not only Infrastructure Ontario, but the Federation of Canadian Municipalities through their program, so that we can take advantage of the 1.48%, 1.46% financing, and over a 10-year term is what is being recommended. Even though we do have substantial reserves set aside for this project, I believe that it is better for the municipality to keep those reserves available for floating cash needs for other particular projects that may arise, or even to subsidize our water wastewater deficit that we do have in in place right now, so that we are able to, we're able to borrow for the fire station so that we can move forward in a better cash position overall. I am recommending a 10-year financing term, just because that is an overall cost to the taxpayer that's lower than a 20-year term. Our rates are a little bit better by about half a percent, and in my career, I've never seen rates this low being offered to municipalities. So I think that's very advantageous to the municipality to go forward with financing of the fire station now.
Thank you. Any questions from any member of council? Council Row?
I had submitted a question earlier, which Ms. Nordeman has just now responded to me via email, and it was really just around why semi-annual payments are the only option, and she just said she was going to verify that. So as long as passing this motion still allows the little bit of the flexibility for them to make the right decision, I think that would be fine.
Thank you, I'm sure, yes.
I'm I'm pretty sure semi-annual is the only option that we do have for these payments.
Seems odd.
Maybe it's the bookwork of the lender. I don't know. Mrs. Wilson, would you read the the motion, and then we'll see if what it says, if there's flexibility there? If, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Leach?
As I say, yeah, we'll certainly look to see if there is any kind of flexibility around that. Typically, the semi-annual payments is always what I've seen in terms of any kind of funding through debentures or through Infrastructure Ontario FCM funding.
Yeah, it's not a huge difference, but it's enough to be valuable.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Council Row, what specific payment terms were you looking for?
I was just curious more the options, I guess, because it just, again, we'd seen the 10 and the 20 years, so I didn't know whether 15 or five were even options, or whether there was, you know, something else. So it was just more of a question, you know, what are we kind of tasking the residents for, I guess, in this? And what what differences do some of those different options make in the in the numbers?
And were you hoping for quarterly payments, or?
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking of my old mortgage paying days, which thankfully don't exist anymore. Paying monthly or, you know, pay, being able to pay your debt off sooner rather than later and not having those restrictions, any kind of restrictions like that, go a long way because the the individual or the corporation has many more possibilities, I guess. So if there ended up being some kind of a cash reserve that would help get the debt down at some point in time with a lump sum payment of some sort, you know, those sorts of things I'm always looking for, but understanding that municipal act may not necessarily allow a lot of those things, just trying to understand what the what the flexibility is.
Well, and the nice thing with this low interest rate, I mean, it is frozen at that rate for the 10 years, if we're going 10 years. So that's a real advantage for us.
Yep, for sure.
Thank you. I guess through you, Madam Mayor, in the in the municipal sector, traditionally, there are very limited options as compared to the residential sector, where there's a lot of players in the market. In the municipal sector, there's normally a limited number of players with a limited number of options. How the how the options are generally set up is that the lending institution that we would use would also issue debentures for, to balance off the loan that they're making to us, they will issue debentures to the public for a similar term. So they will be locked in for the same amount of term as what the loan we would choose would be. So when we choose any kind of payout option or early payment option, generally, our cost for that would be paying out the full balance of the loan at the time we chose the option, rather than having any kind of incentive to pay early. I don't know if that is, if that adequately explains what you're asking.
Okay with that, Council Row?
Yeah, it's fully what I expected, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. But I would be remiss if I did not ask.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, Diane, would you read the motion, please?
Certainly, Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Council Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that the council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Ogan authorize administration to enter into a loan and grant agreement with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, FCM, for 80% of the anticipated costs of the Port Stanley Fire Station, and that council authorize administration to enter into a loan agreement with the with Infrastructure Ontario for 20% of the anticipated costs of the Port Stanley Fire Station, and further, that a 10-year loan term be arranged with both lenders as per report DFS 2520.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Council Cook? Council Cook?
Trying to mute.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Hey. We're now looking at the monthly activities report for the Fire Rescue Service. Any, Chief McDonough is on, do any of you have any questions concerning this? No questions? To read the motion, then?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Row, that report FS 1220, monthly alarm activities report for August of 2020, be received as information.
Call the vote, please?
Council Cook? Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
Yes. Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Now the monthly building report for August 2020. Any questions on this? Or comments? Not? Would you read the motion, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report AMDS 2320, August 2020, monthly building report, be received as information.
Call the vote, please?
Council Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win? Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. We're now at bylaws. So does anybody have, the, obviously, the drain bylaw is the third reading only, so it'll just be on the third, when we go to third reading. Any questions on either of the others? Council Row?
Yes, sir, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just want to verify, Phase Four is the one that's on the east side of East Road and the most recently built homes? Is this the one that we're talking about?
Perrin?
Through you, Madam Mayor. No, this is Phase Four is Lincoln's Cove. So this is at the end of Erie Heights Way, east of Little Creek Place. It's the cul-de-sac 20 lots.
Oh, okay.
And the other isn't complete, so we don't usually assume until it's complete. Is that not correct, Mr. Perrin?
From a process standpoint, there's a number of things that have to be in place. The underground has to be in place for two years, and the surface work, so toplet to asphalt, all the curb and gutter, all the sidewalk has to be in place for 12 months, so.
Before we assume.
Yes. Yeah.
Council Row?
Just a process question, I suppose, but this basically is kind of a a black and white decision. You either accept it or you don't, but the ramifications of not accepting it, I don't know what those would be necessarily, but it also just says that we assume the subdivision based on the satisfaction that was presented to council, but maybe it was before this council. I'm just not sure what that evidence of satisfaction looks like.
As Mr. Perrin stated, and he can state, there are certain conditions that they have to complete before we will assume it, and he said for a certain length of time. Do you want to elaborate on that, Mr. Perrin?
Yeah, so through you, Madam Mayor. I guess legally, by council approving a subdivision, you you are in effect acting, or the parties are agreeing that the subdivision development will proceed, subject to the terms and conditions of the municipality, which outline in the development agreement, and more or less, I don't know the proper legal term, but it's insinuated or expected that, once the subdivision or the development is completed, as per the terms and conditions, that the municipality will assume ownership of it with respect to the ownership of the municipal works, the public works. So the streets, the curb and gutters, the underground services, I would suggest that if council. I would suggest that if council did not act and assume the subdivision after the development has been completed as per the terms and conditions and the developer has satisfied all the the terms and conditions of the of the legal agreement between the developer and the municipality, then we would be considered potentially as acting in bad faith. So if if there's an issue with the quality of the of the services or things aren't completed, then we don't necessarily have to assume it. However, there are avenues within the development agreement whereby the municipality can undertake the work at the expense of the developer. So when a development is is in its infancy and going through all the planning approvals and all the municipal approvals, the intent is at the end, once the work is completed, the municipality will assume ownership and responsibility for all the municipal services.
Leach?
It also has an impact on purchasers in the subdivision. Typically, the first purchaser, if the lawyer asks for a work order certificate from the municipality, they'll ask if the street has been assumed by the municipality or not. And if it hasn't been assumed, then they'll ask, is there sufficient security in place with the municipality to complete the work? So that the purchaser knows that the street is eventually going to be assumed and that, or if it, you know, isn't assumed, that the municipality could step in and complete the services if necessary. Because technically, under the zoning bylaw, a lot has to be on a public street to be a legal lot. And, you know, we we deal with occasionally those situations, particularly in Port Stanley, where a subdivision was done 150 years ago, the developer retained ownership of the streets. And now we're wrestling with that kind of problem, Edward Street, Prospect Street, those kind of situations where it was never assumed as a street and we're trying to, you know, sort out what we can do because it's treated like a public street, but it isn't. So it's not just a benefit to the developer, but it's also a benefit to all the people that buy into that subdivision and own property.
Interesting, thank you.
Thank you.
To read the motion, please, the bylaws.
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mary Marks, seconded by Councilor Rowe, that bylaws 2510, 2511, and 2512 be taken collectively.
Call the vote.
Councilor Cook.
Yeah.
Deputy Mary Marks.
Yes.
Councilor Wynn.
Yes.
Councilor Rowe.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next motion?
Next motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mary Marks, seconded by Councilor Rowe, that bylaws 2510, 2511, and 2512 be read a first and a second time.
Go ahead and call the vote.
Councilor Cook.
Yes.
Deputy Mary Marks.
Yes.
Councilor Wynn.
Yes.
Councilor Rowe.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the final one?
Final motion, Madam Mayor, motion reads, moved by Councilor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mary Marks, that bylaws 2503, 2510, 2511, and 2512 be read a third time and finally passed.
All those, I'm sorry, go ahead and call the vote.
Councilor Cook.
Yeah.
Deputy Mary Marks.
Yes.
Councilor Wynn.
Yes.
Councilor Rowe.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Okay. We don't have any public notice, and I'm wherever, any resolutions? Anyone have any new business they'd like to bring forward? Councilor Rowe.
Great, me again. I'd actually just received an email, and it's not the first one that I've received on this subject, so I just wanted to pull it up here. And it's regarding the beach, of all things, that is south of west Edith Cavell. There are regularly fires there, unattended fires. Homeowners, whatever they're doing, they're building, burning more than just their regular wood. They're building, burning building materials and whatnot. This was brought to the bylaw officers' attention, I don't know, I'll say a couple of weeks ago, I guess. So I'm, and they did say at the time that they were going to follow up. So I'm assuming that that actually has happened, but it just sounds like it's still occurring. So if someone could make that repeat visit or multiple repeat visits to some of those people along that stretch, I think the residents would be greatly appreciative.
Right, because that is private beach, correct, Mr. Leach? It's not in our our ownership, but it's still, fires cannot occur unless they're...
Chief McDonough to comment.
Yes, Chief McDonough, would you like to comment on that?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Let's try that again, sorry. We have had a few complaints on on Main Beach. Three of them were cigarette candles. I'm not sure what's going on in the private sector. We have not had any complaints on that side. But as far as burning on the beach, the public beaches, it's still not allowed, it never will be, so.
This is on the private land down on West Edith Cavell where private people are going out and burning things that are not, like, I'm assuming only fires that they could have on their own private beach would be for cooking food. Is that not correct?
That's correct, I mean, and they could have a recreational fire there. My suggestion, if it's illegal burning, they should be calling on one. We would check it out to make sure that it wasn't, if bylaws are finding it's an illegal burn as well, they can notify us and we would flag that address to have a look at it.
So maybe Mrs., or Councilor, you might want to let these people know that they should probably also let the fire chief know because if they're burning building materials down there, that is not, that's not an acceptable burn.
Right, I can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Deputy Mary Marks.
Couple of quick things. Former councillor Bruce Munger called me the other night and was wondering when the fall yard waste pickup is. And I couldn't see it anywhere. I don't think anyone could help me with when that'll be.
Mr. Brooks, can you tell us when the fall yard waste pickup will be?
Yeah, we typically have that towards the end of October, early November. We haven't set dates for that. We'll work on that over the next week and post that on the on the website. And I can report back to council at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll pass that on. The other quick one I had was, I continue to get a number of calls and councillor Fair and I were going to meet out in the Turvey subdivision a couple of times and our schedules did not line up. But I continue, and I know he does still getting a lot of calls about the skate park. I'm hoping with the cooler weather, getting dark earlier and school back in, but there is still a lot of complaints. I don't have the answers, but people are calling me and I I said I would let all of council know. It's, some days it's really good. Police have made a lot of trips out there because of calls. And unfortunately, these kids, like, I guess I can remember back then, they can run pretty fast and it's pretty hard to apprehend them, but it's an ongoing issue. My point is, I wanted to let council aware of it. I was asked to do that, so that's my attempt tonight. But I hope to have a meeting, Mr. Fair, and we can put our heads together. But I just wanted to bring the awareness up.
So Wynn, you had something you wanted to say about it?
Well, it's funny, having had the one, the skate park in Belmont for, gosh, how many years? My my kids were wee when that opened and how great it had worked. We hadn't had complaints of behavior. And it seems in this last year now, I am hearing more, we've we've had to had the OPPO. Kind of nice for us that they have the office in the Belmont Arena, so they're there more often than not. So that kind of helps keep check on it. So I don't know what's happening this year, that this is, seems to be a problem now. But, yeah, not the purpose of putting these parts in to, for for residents to have to deal with it. So I don't know how we tackle this, but it really is something that we should ensure for for residents' peace of mind, but for safety too, kids using these facilities. I just want to make sure that we don't have to worry about injuries or anything else because of behavior that's been going on, so.
Yes, and I I know, you know, at the time, we did have at least two onsite meetings with the residents. They chose that they wanted a skate park in there. It's not what I would normally have chosen, but that's what they said they wanted. And so that's why we put it in there. And now, obviously, there are some that certainly are abusing it and making it very difficult for those others to enjoy, yes.
This, well, just to state, and and I certainly don't want to put them down because they are a great facility to have and and great use and a great way to bring community kids together. And that's really what usually happens, but it just takes those few occasions that that kind of ruin it. So, yeah, whatever we have to do or put ourselves together or or whether this is our community policing. But, yeah, something that definitely needs to be looked at so that the our our community kids can feel safe going and using it. So it'd be such a shame to see it sitting there, both of them sitting there empty.
Right. Mr. Brooks, do you have anything you want to add about the skate parks?
I don't have much to add, but what I what I can say is that, especially with the new Lynnhurst Skate Park, it is, it's very popular with the kids. Every time I'm out there to have a look at the park during the day, it's it's quite busy. I'm not sure, I haven't witnessed what it's like after working hours, but it it is being well-used.
I know councillor Fair has commented about going out there well after 10 o'clock at night many times because of complaints that are coming to him. So I, does it have a time posted that it can be used or?
I do believe that there is a sign that is posted out there, but I'd have to double-check and look into the sign and if there is a sign, what what time it does say that the kids have to leave.
Okay, thank you, it would probably be helpful. Is it lighted at night?
I know, there are, there are no lights out there.
Okay, so now that it's getting dark earlier, but there is a street light, is there, Don, that's very near it?
It's not right there, but it's...
Close enough? Okay. We darken the street light? We'll see what, anyway, what we will, I think, with community policing and Deputy Mary Marks and councillor Fair, et cetera, we'll have a look at it and see if there's anything we can do. And, Mr. Brooks, you can look to make sure that there is signage on it and what the limited hours are. I had one other thing that I would like to let everyone know. Most of you are probably aware that the CBC program Still Standing with Johnny Harris is coming to do Port Stanley. And they are coming, they're going to be filming on the 28th to October the 1st, and then the comedy show will be October the 2nd. The comedy show, though, is not an open, normally it would be an open to anybody to come, and they can't do that with COVID. So it's going to be by invitation only, but I am aware that council, members of council will be invited to the to the show. But they're doing a look at a variety of different things in Port Stanley. The whole program is about communities that have gone through struggles, et cetera, and are still standing. And if you've ever seen the program, it is quite funny, I enjoy it very much. Took me a long time to figure out who Johnny Harris was because he was Constable Crabtree in Murdoch Mystery. Same person. But, so just letting you know, and that will be going up on our webpage. So you'll see them filming in Port Stanley and around Port Stanley. It's all, it's about Port Stanley, not Central Elgin this time. It's it's strictly on the community of Port Stanley. And they chose to do it, they've been looking at it now for months. They were originally hoping to do it in July, but I was contacted last January, so they've been working on it for quite a while. And so it's finally coming to fruition. And I'm sure, when I was talking with David Kerr today, who's one of the producers, he was saying, he wished it had been in July and then he wouldn't have all the nightmares because with this COVID stuff, it really has been tricky. And this will be their first filming during COVID. So the new programs for this year start in September. So if you want, we would not be on until next year with Port Stanley, but they are filming it this year. So if you want to see what the program's like, it is on CBC. Okay. Well, if we have no other new business, motion move into closed session?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mary Marks, seconded by Councilor Rowe, that council proceed into closed session at 8:31 PM in order to address a matter pertaining to closed session minutes, personal matter about identifiable individual and solicitor-client privilege.
Call the vote.
Councilor Cook.
Yeah.
Deputy Mary Marks.
Yes.
Councilor Wynn.
Yes.
Councilor Rowe.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Put the signs up, we'll go get rid of being live.